I'd like to call the regular scheduled board meeting of the President's Board of Trustees, being held on Tuesday, April 19th, 2022, beginning at 6:33 PM. Everyone stand for further hearings, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
Trustee Brady?
Here.
Trustee Brennan?
Present.
Trustee Glonte?
Here.
Trustee Mahoney?
Trustee Mueller?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
President Klotz.
Present, thank you. Just let everyone know that Dennis said he does not think he will make it. He is stuck at work. He will do his best. Item number one, I'd like to ask the board for a motion to consider approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. I have a second. Mike Mueller, second. Any questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
We'll call for item one. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Glonte?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item number two, I'd like to ask the board for a motion to consider approval of the minutes of the regular village board meeting held on April 5th, 2022. So move. Thank you.
Second.
Thanks, Colleen. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
We'll call for item two. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Glonte?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have item number three. Receive presentation of the Tinley Park Business Spotlight, Avocado Theory, and Better Resume Service by President Klotz and Clerk O'Connor. Drew, you want to come up and do your first? Avocado Theory's Oak Park Avenue location is the first avocado-themed restaurant in the country to offer a wide range of creative and nutritious avocado-based selections, from traditional guacamole to sushi and cheesecake. Avocado Theory Express at 171-1188th Avenue now offers quicker access for carryout orders on the west side of the village. We are pleased to welcome back Drew Patel, owner of Avocado Theory.
Thank you, everyone. It's always a pleasure and honor to be here. I think I did my, it's actually the day after tomorrow is going to be six months since we opened up Avocado Theory and Express on 88th Avenue. It's been a great, like, opening, I mean, you already know, opening the restaurant in the middle of pandemic and all this, every restaurant in a corner and everywhere is struggling to even get the customer. And what we able to not just succeed but overcome every challenges and we're doing really good. I'm glad to say we using almost a month, 6,000 avocado, almost close to 3,000 pound of avocado a month. So you can only imagine how much we going through a day and month. So that's impressive. And, like, we opened Avocado Theory Express. The whole idea behind the Express was our restaurant wasn't big enough and I already projected. So proactively I rent the building and then we thought, how about we use the front part and make it revenue because it's a great location there. So that's how we bought the Express. One thing I do want to mention, which is a lot of customer and a lot of people don't know, the Avocado Theory Express, if you go their website or online, there is a full menu is available. So let's say it's a certain menu we not carry there. However, if customer place the order, we make it at Avocado Theory and bring it to the Avocado Theory Express for the customer so they don't have to drive and workout for everyone. The response we have been is amazing. All the help I've been getting from Tinley Park, I have Mr. Mayor, I had a couple of time meet with him, he gave me really good advice. He point out to the, someone inside the village to help me out with the marketing and see connect me to the other people and I'm using every resource possible and so far, everything has been great. We now, our next focus is summer. We have a garage door, we have a legal license now. We really pushing to have a 6:00 AM to 11:00 AM. We open 6:00 AM, a lot of customer don't know. So we planning to do, like, a morning, like, a free coffee and increase everyone to stop by in the morning. The overall, like, the second thing I want to say is a partnership. The one thing I had always fundamental belief, I listened to TED Talk from Chobani Founder, you can look it up in YouTube, I listened two year ago, and what the CEO was trying to say is that the new CEO need is a community, is about helping people, is about not being in a somewhere exalt seat and look up and say, okay, let's close down this factory, but it's more about community. And at the same mindset I have, that I have sponsored almost every, every single Tinley Park's sponsors, we sponsored the music this year, last year we sponsored too, we sponsored the St. Patrick's Parade, we did the bench, not just there, we partner up with almost every, every school, we did every donation and not just become, that's not the, just the marketing purpose, but I fundamentally believe the best way, best way to work together is a community, helping, supporting each other. I have a, today one lady came who local, she tried to open her own business, like, her own delivery company called Eating. I say I'm more than welcome to help you. So I'm partnering up with her to the local business, helping support locally. I started as a farmer's market and I know how valuable to support community and the local businesses and local farmers. So that's, that's one of the secret thing, it always helped me to lift. The other thing I do want to say is, is one of the challenge we have is our concept is so unique, like, if I would tell you, hey, try our avocado ice cream or avocado cheesecake, you'd be amazed, like, you'd be skeptical and I see that reaction thousand time. And every time we, we have customer try, they be amazed. So I encourage everyone who hasn't been that place, come check us out, you'll be amazed what we doing with avocado. We have a free sample, you, I know that you don't want to spend money if you don't like it, so you can always ask a sample. That's why we push samples so hard, make sure everyone try sample. If they don't like it, we even have a board, it says our commitment, if you, if you're not happy with our product or service, we do not expect you to pay. And we stand behind it. We put our mind, heart, soul behind the quality, customer service. And I encourage everyone, everyone listening this or everyone, at least stop by, give a start. You don't necessarily have to love avocado to come and try our place. We have over, there is a menu, we have like over 70, probably close to 100, this is all avocado base. And give a start is definitely, definitely unique. I also like to say in six months, I have like already 10 people asked me for franchising and I told them, give me at least one year because I want to understand my concept, I want to understand the customer base before I branch out or make any more commitment. We have a lot of future project, we planning to do Avocado Theory Health Store where we're going to make the avocado seed and we're going to make the avocado seed capsule, the butter block for skin and what idea of health product out of avocado. We planning to do like antique store where we're going to have what idea of avocado products, like, like a coffee mugs, tea set and what idea of stuff. We also planning to do delivery. We just have so many project that I cannot, I cannot start everything same time, but all I can say is stop by, check us out is definitely something special, that's for sure. So thank you again for inviting, today is six months, I mean, you already know, 75-person restaurant failed for us one year, so we make it happen and I'm pretty sure we're going to make it through. So thank you again for all support and inviting, thank you.
Good luck. I just want to say too, I was skeptical of the, I'm a cheesecake guru and I've gone all the way to New York to have it. And he wanted me to try it and I was very skeptical, it was amazing.
Yeah.
I didn't think that would, how well, how that would taste with avocado, but it was incredible.
Yeah, it's definitely all these question, like, a lot of people are skeptical, but like I say, if you, if you give a start, I mean, you won't be disappointed, that's for sure.
Thanks, Drew.
Next, we have A Better Resume Service Incorporated, has over 20 years of experience in providing customized resumes, letters, and coaching services that deliver results in today's competitive Midwest employment environment. Please join me in welcoming Rick Hanson of A Better Resume Service.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to be here. I just want to say from my own personal experience, I, my office is down the street from Avocado Theory, absolutely delicious and the ingredients could not be fresher, so I definitely recommend it.
Do you have the cheesecake?
No, but the customized guacamole, that's the making customizer guacamole, fantastic idea, I love it. I will ask for your forgiveness tonight, as I'm still a little clogged from a cold I was getting, I had last week, but I think I can get through this without any hiccups. You may have heard the introduction and thought, resume service, people actually do that? You know, and I thought I could write my own resume, but, you know, it, my, what it means is, is that, well, I'll just introduce myself first. My name is Rick Hanson and I'm the senior writer at A Better Resume Service, which is just down Oak Park Avenue, south of Avocado Theory. And I've been part of your business community for over 20 years now, helping people from all walks of life to achieve their goals for employment, advancement, career development, progression, business development, and even personal growth. Most people will tell you that you should always have an updated resume, but I challenge you to see if each one of those people actually has one. You know, as I look around here tonight, I see neighbors who represent many of the people that I've worked with over the years, fire and police professionals, videographers and camera operators, municipal workers and elected officials, restaurant owners. And, you know, it's been my privilege to help everywhere from recent graduates who want to get their very first career job, to working professionals of every age to find higher pay, get that promotion, change careers, get away from that boss that they can't stand, or even transition into something new following their retirement. At A Better Resume Service, our goal is to accelerate your journey in whichever direction that you're going. If you're making a resume, we will get your phone to ring, you know, even more often. If you're preparing a business plan or a proposal, we can help to make your case that much more effective. If you need to write a bio, a personal statement, or even web content, we will keep your readers engaged. You know, the only reason to write something is so that someone will actually read it. And our team of experienced writers can communicate whatever you need in writing in a way where your audience will take notice and stay attentive. And now when it comes to resumes, you know, which is our bread and butter, many people have trouble because they aren't used to talking or writing about themselves, especially when they need to actually brag about what they've done. In every case though, we've been able to effectively get a client's information and prepare a winning resume for healthcare, education, military, government, manufacturing, finance, transportation, aerospace, and every other sector, even actors, models, and professional athletes. You know, you name it, I've written about it. Now, it's easy to write any old thing and call it a resume. You list your job history, you put down your diploma or your degree, and you slap your name on top of it. Now, the key however, is in making something that gets your phone to ring, and that's where A Better Resume Service comes in. We've been assisting job seekers and business professionals around Chicagoland and nationwide for over 40 years. We have an A-plus Better Business Bureau rating and we encourage you to check out our outstanding Google reviews. Feel free to email me directly if you're curious at rick@betterresumes.com, or come on by and say hi at the Tinley Park office, which is right over by Cousins in the Tinley Center Plaza. And if someone you know needs a professional writer, I will be the first thing that pops up if you just Google resume service Tinley Park. So that's it, have a great night, everybody.
Next, we have item number four, I'd like to ask the board to consider the appointment of David Adamski to the position of Assistant Finance Director.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bill. David has been identified as a highly qualified candidate to serve in the position of Assistant Finance Director. He has over 15 years of related experience in various of accounting and finance, including public, corporate, governmental, and investment accounting. He has successfully overseen financial projects, prepared numerous finance reports, reporting documents, worked collaboratively across functional areas, and supervised a large staff. Most recently, he has served as a Comptroller of the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. David holds a Master's of Business Administration in Finance. Consider appointing David to the position of Assistant Finance Director effective April 20th, 2022. Any comments from the board? Nope. David, you want to say a couple of words?
Sure. Good evening. I just wanted to take this moment and thank Mayor Klotz and the Village Board for giving me this opportunity to serve the village of Tinley Park at the best of my ability. Also wanted to extend a thank you to everyone that I met throughout the interview process. Everyone was very welcoming, it was just a wonderful experience. Thank you, Pat and Hannah, Angela, I know Regina's not here. And again, Mayor Klotz, thank you again. It was a pleasure meeting Brad as well, so thank you.
You want to go up for a photo real quick?
Colleen.
Brad or Hannah, you want to add anything?
No, I just, we're very excited to have David start. We have lots of work for him to do, so we'll hit the ground running, that's for sure. And it's, you know, again, we're just really excited to have him on board and I think it'll work out really well, so.
Thanks, Hannah. Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please. Item number four.
We'll call for item four. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Glonte?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Next is item five, I'd like to ask the board to consider the appointment of Vincent Cando Eller to the position of 911 dispatcher. So move.
Okay.
Vincent has 15 years of experience in dispatching both emergency and non-emergency calls for police, fire, and ambulance services, working for a centralized dispatch center. He is skilled at operating radio transmitters, a multi-line phone system, and computer terminals simultaneously for multiple jurisdictions. He is EMD and IDPH EMD certified, as well as LEED's Full Access Certified. He has received three certificates of commendation during his dispatching career. Consider appointing Vincent to the position of 911 dispatcher effective April 20th, 2022. Any comments from the board? No. Want to say a couple of words?
No.
Since you're used to talking.
I'd like to say thank you for that opportunity, hope to serve the village for many years to come, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
We'll call for item five. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Glonte?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. I'm sorry.
Photo.
Item number six. May I have a motion to consider approval of the consent agenda items? So move. Second.
Can I make a motion? Remove one real quick.
Yeah.
I think what we do is we make a motion to approve, then we second it, and then if somebody wants an item removed, then we remove it. That's okay. So we're all ready? I'm sorry. One second, so who voted, would you like to move?
Eight.
Okay, then you take a vote on the rest of the items.
Okay.
It's not being removed, we're just going to vote on separate.
Separate.
It's removed off the consent agenda, but we vote on the remaining items, then we have another motion for yes.
It'll be 6A.
Perfect.
6A right now, correct?
Yeah, now, well, now we're voting on the consent agenda. Any questions for the remaining items? Nope. Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
We'll call for item 6A. Trustee Brady?
Six.
Six, sorry. Six. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Glonte?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries, now 6A. Any discussion for item 6A?
We need a motion first. We need a motion and a second, we can discuss it.
I'll make a motion for item 6A, contract for the audit services.
You have a second?
One second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, oh no, you want to discuss it now. Right. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to bring up, I'm a little concerned about renewing this for another five years, that means 10 years that we have the same audit firm. In my history, I just think it's important that we can make that change, constantly, you know, every three to five years, we have a new, a new look at it. You know, I also wanted to ask, part of the audit review and the other audit set gone on, have gone on, I asked that at the last time I did get, when they presented the audit, is we had a BKD audit, we had a broad assessment audit, I cannot find that on the website, by the way, I don't know where that is. If you could, please tell me where I can find that, those reports that were posted out there? I couldn't find them today when I looked. Are they still on the website?
Can you clarify which reports?
The BKD reports, the broad assessment that was done by, by trustee Mangan. There was two reports that used to be posted on the village website, today I looked, they were not there.
I don't recall if they've ever actually been posted or if they were just shared with the trustees before, but we can definitely find it and circulate.
It was in the agenda item.
It was on BKD audit, that's very, that's several years old now.
Yeah, that was, as an agenda item, is a backup.
It's totally related to this topic.
Right.
So we're on 6A.
So I, well, then, part of my question is, we did this broad assessment, we had the issues, we, and now I'm questioning, this is the audit, I don't, I think that's when we are going to continue the same audit, they should at least expand their scope to review those reports and look at the weaknesses that were found.
I just want to clarify, go ahead, Mayor.
This is a totally different type of audit. Sikkich Audit and BKD are two separate items.
Sure, I know, but he.
And two different types of scopes of work, so Brad or Hannah, if you guys could, want to answer that?
Can I finish speaking though, first? I understand that what they proposed shows all their other audits that they do do, he does the same audit, he's still in the room, but they offer all the services, they're all different types of audit, but they do offer those services. Basically, the reason I want to separate it is, I want, I will be voting on those are the reasons why.
Just to clarify, so it is only a three-year proposal, there's two years option, two-year options, so I believe you had stated five, so I just want to kind of clarify that for the record. And separately, yes, I believe they do a variety of other services. What we engaged them for and asked them for a proposal for was specifically for our audit. If the board as a whole wanted to give direction to go a different route and add additional services, it's something we can always consider, but I know, again, I don't want to speak too much to it because we've addressed the BKD audit as being a separate item, but at the time, we did, it make many of the recommendations, implement many of the recommendations that that report had suggested, so.
Thanks, Hannah. Will you call the vote?
Trustee Brady?
No.
No to Sikkich?
I'm sorry?
Oh, we're voting.
You're voting, you're voting for Sikkich or not?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes is for Sikkich, no?
I'm voting for them, my apology.
Okay. Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Glonte?
No.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everyone, thank you Hannah for your explanation. Item number seven, Trustee Sullivan.
Thank you. Consider Ordinance 2022-0-024 approving the annual budget of the village of Tinley Park, Cook, and Will counties, Illinois, for the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2023.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
On March 15th, 2022, the village board reviewed and recommended approval of the draft proposed budget for fiscal year ending April 30th, 2023. In accordance with the state statutes, a copy of the proposed budget has been available for public inspection at least 10 days prior to its adoption. The draft budget has been posted and available on the transparency portal of the village website since April 8th, 2022. As also required, a public hearing was held within seven days of making the proposed budget available for public inspection on April 12th, 2022. The proposed total expenditure budget for the general fund is $67,948,479. The Tinley Park Public Library is also included in the overall village budget, and the proposed total expenditure budget for the library's general fund is $6,624,670. The proposed total expenditure budget of all village funds, including the Tinley Park Public Library, is $192,918,603. This ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Colleen, that's a lot of numbers. Anyone from the board have any questions?
I just have.
Sure, go ahead, Diane.
Last week, when we did this public hearing on the 15th, I don't believe it was recommended, we did a vote on that, but I had a lot of questions.
What, I'm sorry, what wasn't recommended?
We didn't vote to recommend that at that.
It was a public hearing. You don't vote in public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it just says it was recommended.
Public hearing is to present it to the board.
Right.
In the public, public hearing.
Right, I'm just saying here, it says it was recommended for approval. I had sent some questions prior to that, I asked for meetings, but the new rules that I can't meet with, which is without management approval, it made it very difficult. There was a lot of errors, I was told, as they asked questions during the public review, and nobody came back to me. The last thing I heard was patience, we will get back to you, and it, and we didn't get back to me. So I just want to explain why I will be abstaining from voting. I don't feel comfortable voting on something that the numbers, I still have questions and I don't even know what a lot of the new items are being added, Riverwalk, I think these are just items that never, have never been discussed in any meeting I've been part.
Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
We'll call for item seven. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Glonte?
Standing.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you, everybody. And Hannah, Brad, all our department heads, thank you for, and Pat, all the work that you guys did on this budget, first year for all you guys together, and it was amazing, so thank you. Item number eight, Trustee Sullivan.
Consider Resolution 2022-R-033 authorizing transfers from the general fund water and sewer operations and maintenance funds and commuter parking lot operations and maintenance fund.
Thank you. You have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mike.
This resolution provides for a series of year-end transfers following established fiscal practices as outlined in the Fiscal Policies Manual. These transfers are supported by the excess of revenues over expenses that may exist at the close of the April 30th, 2022 fiscal year, or from the fund balance of the designated fund initiating the transfer. The transfers are made to support capital and debt services, reserve funds for both the short-term upcoming fiscal year and long-term beyond the upcoming fiscal year, financial needs of the village to support the replacement of infrastructure, equipment, and provide the debt service on outstanding bonds. equipment, and provide the debt service on outstanding bonds. The resolution establishes not to exceed amounts for the contemplated transfers of $15 million from the general fund, $5 million from the water and sewer funds, which is water retail, water wholesale and sewer, and $1 million from the commuter parking lot fund. The actual dollar amount of the transfers will be determined once the fiscal year has closed, and may be less than the provided maximums. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you. Any questions for the board for item number eight? Any questions from the public? Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Roll call for item eight, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Glonte?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Item number nine, trustee Brady.
Yes, I'd like the board to consider adopting resolution 2022-R-025, authorizing the village manager to negotiate with the Cook County Land Bank Authority for the acquisition of property.
So move. Thank you, Mike. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Kelly. Go ahead, Bill.
The village has signed a term sheet with the Cook County Land Bank Authority to move forward with the purchase of two parcels located at 6825 and 6827 171st Street. The price for both these parcels is $65,000. This resolution provides the village manager authority to continue to move this purchase forward with the Cook County Land Bank Authority. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
Roll call for item nine, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Glonte?
Abstain.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Item number 10, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider ordinance 2022-O-026 approving the amendments of sections 132.5 and 132.6, that's cannabis and drug paraphernalia, of the Village of Tinley Park Code and Code of Ordinances. I'll second it. The proposed ordinance implements changes to the village code of ordinances that aligns the village's regulations with current state laws that preamps municipalities and allows for certain sale, possession, and use of cannabis adults within the state of Illinois. This item was discussed at the March 15th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting, and is eligible for adoption tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
Roll call for item 10, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Glonte?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Item number 11, Mr. Mueller.
I move we consider adopting ordinance 2022-O-027, granting a special use for substantial deviation from a park place PUD at 16200 Harlem Avenue for Ascend Illinois LLC.
One second. One second. Thanks, Bill. Go ahead, Mike.
The petitioner requests a special use for substantial deviation from the park place PUD to remove the requirement of restaurant use on the property. Any use listed in the underlined B3 district would then be allowed. Plan commission held a public hearing on April 7, 2022, and voted 7 to 0 to recommend approval of this special use in accordance with the listed plans and findings of fact in the staff report. This ordinance is eligible for adoption tonight as well.
Thanks, Mike. Any comments, questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
Roll call for item 11, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Glonte?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Item number 12, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider adopting ordinance 2022-O-028, granting a special use permit for an adult-use cannabis dispensing organization to Ascend Illinois LLC at 16200 Harlem Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Bill. Go ahead, Mike.
Ascend Illinois LLC requests a special use permit to operate an adult-use cannabis dispensing organization of the subject property in the B3 PUD zoning district. Plan commission held a public hearing on April 7, 2022, and voted 7 to 0 to recommend approval of the special use in accordance with the listed plans and findings of fact in the staff report. And this ordinance is also eligible for adoption tonight.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions from the board?
I just wanted to thank, a lot of people are involved in this, and it's been a long time in the making, so Pat, you and your office, and Hannah, Kimberly, the plan commission did an excellent job of going through this. So thanks for all the hard work to get this before us tonight.
I'd echo the same thing. Kimberly, thank you for everything that you guys all did in our, in our plan commission. They had a lot of items to go through for Ascend to be approved, so thank you. Any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Roll call for item 12, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Glonte?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Item number 13, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider adopting resolution 2022-R-028, approving and accepting a final plat of subdivision for Loyola Medicine.
Thank you, Mike.
The petitioner, Sean Vincent, Vincent, on behalf of Loyola Medicine, has requested final plat approval for a plat of subdivision related to the Loyola Medicine ambulatory care facility dated April 5th, 2022. The plan commission reviewed the final plat of re-subdivision at the April 7th, 2022 meeting, and voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval, subject to the two conditions as outlined in the staff report. This resolution is eligible for adoption tonight.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions from the board? I just want to say again, thank you, Kimberly and staff, all the work we did on this, we talked internally. If we were able to, you know, work with Loyola, which was great, and get this moving, this would be the catalyst for that corner. And I think we're going to be, the corridor is going to fill up very quickly with Loyola's name and reputation going on the Grange Road. So Kimberly, again, thank you and the plan commission for all the work you guys did with helping make sure any hiccups that was going with county or anything between you and Colby and John Urbansky, it's been moving very smoothly, and our attorneys, so thank you. Any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
Roll call for item 13, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Glonte?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 14 is Mr. Mueller's last.
And my favorite.
It's Mike Coleman's favorite.
I move we consider adopting ordinance 2022-O-029, amending Title 15, Chapter 155 of the Tinley Park Municipal Code, titled code pertaining to the adoption of the 2021 International Residential Code, 2021 International Property Maintenance Code, and 2017 National Electrical Code.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Kelly. Go ahead, Mike.
Staff is requesting to amend ordinance 2016-O-055 in order to adopt the 2021 IRC, 2022 IPSC, and 2017 NEC. The last update to the village code occurred on October 2016, which included the 2012 adoption of the ICC code, specifically the International Residential Code, International Building Code, International Chemical Code, International Energy Conservation Code, and the International Fire Code. This item was discussed at the April 5th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting, and is eligible for adoption tonight.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board?
Just want to thank Mr. Coleman for all your hard work on this. Kimberly and I are very excited to finally get this one completed, so thank you for your help. Thank you.
I echo the same thing, Mike. Thanks. At the April 5th Cowe meeting, it was more about codes I've heard in a long time, and so thank you for updating us on all the codes.
Thank you. It was a pleasure.
Anyone from the public have any comments on Mike Coleman's codes? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Roll call for item 14, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Glonte?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Item number 15, trustee Brennan.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting resolution 2022-R-034, approving the purchase of a fire engine in the amount of $830,000. So, thank you, trustee Brady.
Go ahead, Bill.
The proposed purchase is for a new fire engine to be added to the fleet of the village's fire department. As has historically been the practice with major, for purchase for the fire department, the cost of new engine would be shared within the Village of Tinley Park, in the Tinley Park Fire Department Association. The association proposes to fund 20% of the cost of the vehicle, $159,497. The new engine will be purchased through the Houston-Galveston Area Council Purchasing Cooperative. Items purchased through this cooperative have been subjected to a competitive bidding process before they are offered to the members of the municipal conference. Funds for the village's share, $637,989 of the purchase, were budgeted and available in the current fiscal year budget. The Tinley Park Fire Department Association has already approved their share of the funding. This item was discussed at the Committee of the Whole Meeting held prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? I just want to add, thank you Chief Klotz and Deputy Chief Rita. Our association, which contributed a lot of this purchase, which is very appreciated, like I said, $160,000. And most importantly, first time in a long time, you guys actually put a committee together, and they helped build what the men would like on the fire engine, instead of you guys picking what should be on there. So very much appreciated that you let the guys build that fire chalk for their needs, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the public? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Roll call for item 15, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Glonte?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have item 16, trustee Hone is not here. Trustee Glonte, since you don't have any items, would you like to take?
Sure.
Item 16?
I'd like to ask the board to consider adopting resolution 2022-R-038, approving a contract with Stratoc Construction Company for the 2022 concrete flatwork and curb program.
So move. You have a second?
One second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Diane.
Thank you. The village's annual sidewalk flatwork and curb program addresses the required concrete maintenance. The scope of the work consists of removal, replacement, and construction of the new concrete sidewalk, curb, and gutter, and the driveways are various locations throughout the village as determined by staff. I'd like to ask to consider approving the contract to Stratoc Construction Company in the amount of $120,820, plus a contingency of $79,180. The contract amount is not to exceed $200,000. This item was discussed at the Committee of the Whole Meeting previous, and it's eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Diane. Any comments from the board?
I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
When I was going through the paperwork earlier, and we discussed it at the Cowe meeting, John, is that taking care of the ADA sidewalk part of it?
Yes, sir. My understanding that the ADA is part of the scope of the area.
Okay, I just didn't see it listed, so I just wanted to make sure.
Anything else, Bill?
No.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
Roll call for item 16, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Glonte?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have item number 17, receive comments from staff.
Again, I just want to thank the finance department for rising to the occasion for the budget process, and all the department heads. You know, this was a large feat, then we asked all the department heads, coming out of the pandemic, two years of the pandemic, and working together, finance department being short-staffed, they all rose to the occasion to get this pulled together, and it was a monumental feat, and I can't thank the staff, Hannah, picking up the slack of being the interim treasurer, you know, during this period also. It was just, it was just great teamwork with all the departments working together, it was very collaborative, and it worked very, very well. So hats off to our staff to pull this together, so.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else? From that table? Anyone from the right?
Just wanted to announce that we are happy to say that the Vinnie Gavel project is closed on their own, which means they will be moving forward with their construction. We are scheduling a pre-construction meeting with them next week, so soon to see some activity on a beautiful site that will be a great asset to the community once completed and brought back to life. So I know it's been a long time. Community's been asking a lot about it. We've been patiently waiting, so more to come with that.
Perfect. I'd like to talk to him about his codes.
I mean, a few updates there.
Anyone else?
Nope.
Next, we have item number 18, receive comments from the board. Anyone from the board here to comment?
I'd like to add something.
Sure.
Recently, I had ran into Tinley residents at a, it was an Andrew fundraiser, it was Connie and Chuck Augustiniak. And at that fundraiser, talking with Chuck, he told me that his father-in-law was going to be on the Chicago Honor Flight. So that Honor Flight took place on April 14th, and Jack, his name's Jack Zanzig, he's also a Tinley Park resident, and Jack served as a Navy corpsman, and he departed from Midway at about 6:30 a.m. on the 14th. They go to DC, and then they returned about 8:30 p.m. I followed Chuck on his Facebook page all day. It was nice, just how happy his father-in-law was seeing the other veterans that were on there. I just think it's an awesome thing that they do, this Honor Flight Chicago, to recognize the bravery, determination, and patriotism of our nation's senior war veterans. And just, I did a little research on Honor Flight Chicago, and at the time that I searched, they have flown over 9,000 veterans. So I just wanted to recognize Jack Zanzig and his Honor Flight Chicago this past week.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your service.
Yes.
Anyone else from the board?
Just want to bring up again the graduation for the Citizens Police Academy. Last week, it was really a fantastic gathering, and I definitely appreciate the amount of resources that go into putting that together. It meant a lot to me when I went through that class. It definitely taught me every, things that I had no idea. Definitely showed me the other side, so I definitely want to keep that class on. But I just want to thank you and the research that you've allowed to have putting this class together.
I just kind of echo that, too. I wanted to mention the Citizens Police Academy graduation that we were all invited to. Thank you to all the board members that were able to attend. And especially, I want to thank Officers Hassan and London, who did an amazing job putting that together and running the show. Dinah, who's just amazing with what she does with our Citizens Police Academy. And then finally, our command staff, Commander Pulis and Deputy Chiefs Tilton and Rafferty. It was a lot of fun. The food was excellent. We had a great time, and thanks for inviting us all to that. I wanted, again, like Pat said, I want to thank our finance department and all our department heads for this budget. It was, you know, Brad came on last minute, Hannah being newly appointed assistant village manager, and Pat, newly appointed village manager. It was seamless. You guys just knocked it out of the park, so thank you for that. And then, last thing I want to mention, there are two things, is in our courts office, who I don't think gets enough recognition, is Laura Gedado, Deputy Clerk. She is absolutely a machine. Anyone that works here who knows Laura, what she goes through on a daily basis, and the amount of time she puts into it, is very thankful. And lastly, again, I just, our marketing department is extremely important to us, and again, I want to thank, you know, our cameras were down, you know, here we have Jason Freeman here, 7:30 at night for the village to tape this for the residents. So thank you, Jason, for coming back and taping this, and Donna Frankie, our marketing director. What you guys do is just amazing, so thanks for everything.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I may?
Yes.
You scooped over me. I'd like to point out to you that Portland Township is having a